We'll go ahead and get going. Good morning, or good evening. Thank you for joining us this evening for our City Council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheetah?
Here.
Lorette?
Here.
Mangum?
Here.
Mansfield?
Here.
Marsha?
Here.
Nichols?
Here.
Wax?
Here.
If you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, after which we will have a moment of silence for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item 3 is the Consent Agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If anyone, if anyone, and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate Agenda item. A. Minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the clarification in regular council meetings of April 6, 2023. B. Material Claims. Council may wish to consider the material claims for the period of May 16 through 31, 2023. C. Treasurer's Report. Council may wish to approve the Treasurer's Report for April 2023 showing cash and investments as of April 30, 2023. D. Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Advisory Committee Appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Brett Walker to serve as a member of the CDBG Advisory Committee, filling a long-term vacancy. Brett's term will begin June 1, or June 2, 2023, and will expire January 1, 2026. E. Pocatello Development Authority PDA Appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Nathan Richardson to serve as a member of the Pocatello Development Authority, replacing Victoria Byrd, whose term expired. Nathan's term will begin June 2, 2023, and will expire May 1, 2027. F. Open Container Waiver Request, Historic Downtown Pocatello. Council may wish to consider a request from Historic Downtown Pocatello for a waiver of open container ordinance to allow alcohol to be consumed in the 100 block of South Garfield Avenue and Inside Lookout Point on Wednesdays from June 1, 2023 through September 16, 2023, for revive at 5 events. If the open container ordinance is waived, it should be contingent upon the applicant, the applicant meeting Police Department requirements and purchasing appropriate permits.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of the Consent Agenda Items A through F as outlined in Agenda Item Number 3.
Second. We have a motion by Council President Cheetum and a second by Mangum. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheetah?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Lorette?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Marsha?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 4, Proclamations. We have no proclamations tonight, so we'll go to Agenda Item 5 is the Calendar Review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. June 8, 9:00 a.m., City Council Work Session. June 12, 13, 14, 15, and 16, 9:00 a.m., City Council Budget Development Meeting. June 15, 5:30 p.m., Clarification. And June 15, 6:00 p.m., regular City Council Meeting. Other events. June 2, Lookout Point Park Grand Opening in our downtown, in our Historic Downtown area will be from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. June 3, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., Free Admission Day at Zoo Idaho, sponsored by Connections Credit Union. June 3, at 6:00 p.m., Gate City Gray's Home Game Season Opener. June 3 through 10, Idaho High School Rodeo Finals at Bannock County Event Center. June 6, 4:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m., Airport Master Plan Open House at the Pocatello Airport Terminal Building. June 10, 8:00 a.m., Parks and Recreation, June Joy in the Journey Jog Fun Run. June, looking ahead, we've got June 16, 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. is the Fourth Annual Poki Paddle at Centennial Park. The Poki Paddle has changed the name to this year because of the water is too high to revive at 4 on a Friday. This, this is a free community event benefiting the Portnife River Vision. June 18, Father's Day at the Zoo. Fathers will receive a 50% discount off their admission when they are accompanied by a paid child. City offices will be closed Monday, June 19, to observe the Juneteenth holiday. Garbage and recycle services will operate as scheduled. And a big congratulation to all of our high school graduates that are graduating today. We will move to Agenda Item 6 is a public hearing, Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Program Year 2019 Annual Action Plan Amendment. This time has been set aside for council to accept comments from the public regarding a proposed amendment to the Program Year 2019 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Annual Action Plan. This amendment will allow for the CDBG CV CARES Act funding to be used for eligible public facilities activities. The amendment was reviewed and recommended for approval by the CDBG Advisory Committee at their meeting on March 28, 2023. A written comment period began April 12, 2023 and concluded June 1, 2023. Following the public hearing, the council may wish to approve the amendment and authorize the submission, including any public comments to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. I declare the public hearing open. I might, before we get going, I might just remind anybody that would like to speak on this public hearing to please remember to speak about the public hearing and about what is on the agenda, not anything else. With that, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Christine Howe, and I'm the Grants Manager for the City of Pocatello. I oversee the Neighborhood and Community Services Division, which is responsible for administering the city's Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, funding. As described by the mayor, this hearing is an oral comments opportunity for an amendment to the CDBG Program Year 2019 Annual Action Plan. In August of 2020, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, through the CARES Act, provided CDBG entitlement communities with funding to expand efforts to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. The city programmed the CARES Act, or CDBG CV, funding in its Program Year 2019 Annual Action Plan to administer an emergency rental and mortgage assistance program, as well as provide grants to local agency partners for public service activities. The amendment being heard tonight would allow for the CDBG CV funds to be used for eligible public facilities activities. To date, the city has expended $456,470 of the total, $495,425 for the grant award. This leaves about $39,000 for public facilities activities. In March, the Pocatello Free Clinic presented an application for use of the remaining CDBG CV funds for public facilities work at their clinic. Pending available funding, the work would include a walk-up window at the entrance area of the clinic to allow for proper social distancing and safe interaction between clients and staff. It would also allow for a door to prevent clients entering the clinician rooms in a way to safely transport patients to the clinician rooms. And finally, a window in the pharmacy area to allow for safe exchange of medication without physical interaction. This public facilities work is eligible under the HUD guidelines and would not exceed the available CDBG CV funding. The CDBG Advisory Committee reviewed this amendment and recommended approval at their March 28, 2023 Committee Meeting. This amendment was also advertised in a local newspaper, and copies were made available at the Marshall Public Library, Neighbor Works, Pocatello, Life, Inc., the Housing Authority, City Hall, and on the city website. The comment period began April 12, 2023 and concludes today. No written comments have been received to date. At the conclusion of the public hearing for the P-119 Annual Action Plan Amendment, the City Council may wish to approve this amendment and authorize the submission, including any public comments to HUD. And I am available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Questions, council? Thank you, Christine. Oh, Christine, before you leave, any correspondence that you've received?
None today.
That the council has not seen. Madam Clerk, have we received any in your office?
In our office.
Okay, thank you. We would look for any supporting, any testimony supporting the application. Any testimony uncommitted to the application. Any testimony opposed to the application. Okay, then, Christine, I don't think there's anything for you to rebut. So I declare the public hearing closed. Council, this is before you. How do you wish to proceed?
Mayor.
Yes.
I would move to approve Agenda Item Number 6 as listed.
Second.
We have a motion by Nichols and a second by Mangum. He's getting ya. Every time, you're gonna get quicker than that. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Nichols?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Cheetah?
Yes.
Lorette?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Marsha?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 7, Public Hearing Zone and Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment, JW Properties LLC. This time has been set aside for council to accept comments from the public regarding a zone map amendment application request by Jake Woodward of JW Properties LLC for a zone and comprehensive plan map amendment application to rezone 3.03 acres, acre parcel, more or less, from residential medium-density multifamily RMM to residential high-density RH. The request also includes rezoning lots 26 through 28, Block 13, of West Pocatello Town Site from residential medium-density single-family RMS to residential medium-density multifamily RMM. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the application with conditions. I declare the public hearing open. Council, have you had any expertise, contact, or communication? Okay? Who's, who's, who's? The applicant, you're the applicant. Come on up. Are you Jake?
I'm Jake, yeah.
Perfect.
A pleasure to be here tonight. Thank you for the time. Sorry for the hesitancy in standing up. Normally, I defer to the planner first, but happy to answer any questions. I'll give you kind of a brief introduction about the property. This should be somewhat familiar to you because we actually executed on a land exchange between the city and property that I owned. So this, this property has had a lot of issues with it, one of which was in a flood zone. And we finally went through the, a clomer, which is a revision of the floodplain map. All of that was submitted to the city and approved. It's gone now to the federal level at FEMA. And actually just got correspondence back from FEMA this week that our proposal has been approved. So we will be able to pull that land out of a floodplain, which is good news. So it was a big check off in our, in our process. The second is that, as we bought this property, half of our property line actually went out into the middle of the Portnife River, and it included the levee next to the river. And we felt, myself and the, and the city, felt like it was in everyone's best interest for me to relinquish that piece of the property in exchange for some remnant parcels that the city owned that were contiguous to my property. So it allows now the city to own the levee and out into the middle of the river. And then I own now, in exchange, some remnant parcels that we're folding into a larger, a larger parcel. This is an infill piece. And anyway, we're seeking, you know, to change the zoning to a higher density, which would allow for some, another affordable housing option in the city. We're planning on, on developing some apartment buildings and some townhomes. So as you know, we've gone through planning and zoning. We received unanimous support for the rezone. And again, I've done an enormous amount of heavy lifting on getting us to this point. And the city has been absolutely outstanding. The city staff has been super supportive, but also helped me think through a lot of the potential pitfalls. They've come up with some great solutions. They're all, they've all been very solution-minded. And so we've had good collaboration back and forth. And I think we've got a plan that, that works. So we're, we're glad to finally be here at this point because it's, like I said, we've, we've been working on this for a better part of a year now. And so we're here, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. As it relates to some technical things, I may not be the best person to answer it, but I'll do my best.
Yes, we've got a couple of questions here. Councilmember Nichols and then Council President Cheetum.
So with this change, how many additional units will you be able to put on the property? What's the increase gonna be?
I should be better prepared to answer this question. What we're proposing is with, with the proposal from medium-high density to high-density, I don't know what the difference is, what the delta is. I know that the planner, the, someone from the city staff could answer that question better than I can. But our proposal is that we would build 72 apartment units. And again, I might have to defer to Matt on that because I don't know what it would allow me to do right now. But it's probably an additional 20 units or so, going from the, the existing zoning to what we're proposing.
Right, okay.
I'll get you, I'll give you a specific answer on that.
Okay, Council President Cheetum.
Just a curious statement. You mentioned the floodplain adjustments. I'm curious how wide the river is where you're at now, today.
Again, I don't, I don't know. In fact, I, I meant to get up here earlier, honestly, and I got kind of stuck at work. I lived down in Salt Lake City and had to drive up here and ran into some weather and traffic and so forth. But I meant to actually go to the river or to the site today and shoot some additional drone footage to compare where it's at today as to where it was last year. Because I think, you know, this year, especially in the next month or two, we are definitely gonna see the high watermark. And so, you know, we're gonna see if that levee was engineered and built correctly and if it holds and if we're gonna see flooding or not. So last time I was here, which was last month for planning and zoning, it, I mean, it still was, was, was in good shape. And there, that, that river would have had to rise another probably 15 feet in vertical elevation for it to spill over. So I think we're in good shape.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Mangum.
You had mentioned affordable housing. Is this just the idea of apartments? Or are you looking at like subsidized housing?
We are not looking to do any subsidized housing. In fact, as part of this, as, as I started to consult with the city about what I wanted to do, they had encouraged me to actually reach out to the community. It wasn't a requirement, but we sent out a letter to everyone within 300 feet of our property and organized a neighborhood meeting. And so we actually brought a food truck, provided dinner for everybody that wanted to come and kind of look at our, our plans and give us feedback. And so we were open to comments, still trying to figure out what we wanted to do. And by and large, everyone was in support, but there was some concern about, hey, you know, they didn't want Section 8 housing. They didn't want, you know, government subsidized housing, which was not really, that's not really my forte anyway. So that's not what we were planning on doing. But as you know, I mean, around the country, especially in the western mountain states, we have a housing crisis. We need affordable housing. And so this is just another option. But we plan on building a nice apartment complex. And then, like I said, we'll probably end up building five to eight townhomes as well as part of the development. But no, it will not be Section 8 or government subsidized.
So I will follow up. So with the development, do we have a plan for like the streets and whatnot like that for the influx of traffic? And how does that look coming in and out of that area? Maybe that's a better Merrill question.
It's a very good question, and Merrill can address that. I'll tell you, from my perspective, that is always a concern to the community about, hey, what's this gonna do in terms of traffic and city infrastructure? We now know that the city roads, the city infrastructure, in terms of water, power, sewer, storm drain, everything else, what we're proposing will not exceed the limits or the capacity to what is in place now. So we will not be putting any, I mean, obviously, we'll have some extra burden, but the infrastructure that's in place is sufficient to handle exactly what we're proposing. Anyway, you had a second part of that question. Can't remember what it was now, but...
You basically answered it.
Okay.
Super. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Staff, Merrill, it looks like you're prepared. No, Matt.
Matt, I just couldn't see, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. Matthew Lewis, Senior Planner with the city. I won't go through the agenda item before. That's already been noted. I will note, just because a question was asked, that the biggest difference between the RMM and RH is density. So under RMM is 12 units per acre. Under the RH is 30 units per acre. Based on the 3, on the 3.03 acres, it could actually have up to around 90 units. I think Mr. Woodward, Woodward is, proposes 72, 78, somewhere in there. So less than what would actually be permitted outright on that. I appreciate working with, with Mr. Woodward on this project. Like you said, it's been one that we've all kind of worked on diligently to get to this point. I would like to note that under the, our, under the RMM zone, so in addition to the RH, there's some lots that are lots 26 through 28 of the West Pocatello Town Site that is currently zoned RMS. The proposal is to go to RMM. Under that, that zone, the developer plans to construct townhomes, which will act as a transitional buffer between RMS zoning to the south and southwest and RH multifamily development. 1.34 acres is designated as public in the Comprehensive Plan Map, therefore, part of the application request amendment from public to residential designation. Both the RH and RMM zoning designations would be consistent with the Comprehensive Land Use Map designation of residential. There's a mix of residential dwelling types in the surrounding area, ranging from a fairly dense development associated with oak tree manufactured home development, as well as single-family residents, to the south-southwest. The three parcels in question are separated either by either Oakwood Drive or Aspen Lane, which will help to provide a buffer in additional to, in addition to required landscape setbacks as part of any development. Development also abuts the river levee, which has paved a pedestrian path extending through Sacagawea Park. Developer will integrate open space and access to the pedestrian, to the pedestrian park and adjacent park. The properties located in the built environment mean adequate water, sewer, and, and utilities are relatively readily available. Curb, gunner, and sidewalk will be required as part of development. All property owners within a 300-foot radius of the existing boundaries were, were provided notice. Notice was also published in the Idaho State Journal on April 25 and again on May 16 of 2023. Two signs were also posted on the subject property April 24, 2023. No written comments have been received. As noted, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on the evening of May 10, 2023, at which time they recommended approval with the conditions. A copy of their findings is within your package. That concludes my presentation, Mayor.
Counsel, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. Counsel, any questions for Matt? Nope. Matt, have you had any correspondence that we have not seen?
Have not.
Madam Clerk, have we seen any correspondence in your office?
No, we have not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I would look for any testimony supporting the application. Any testimony uncommitted to the application. Any testimony opposed to the application. Then I don't see any reason why you would come up and do a rebuttal, and that's your option at this point. So I'm gonna go ahead, and I declare the public hearing closed. Counsel, this is before you. How do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would move that we approve Agenda Item 7 as specified for JW Properties LLC.
Second.
We have a motion by Mangum and a second by Cheetum. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Mangum?
Yes.
Cheetah?
Yes.
Lorette?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Marsha?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 8, Short Plat Application, Okey Dokey Pokey. Council may wish to approve a short plat application submitted by Judith E. Hensner, represented by GVE Drafting and Land Surveying, to subdivide 0.19 acres, more or less, into two residential lots. The proposed subdivision is located at 1452 South 3rd Avenue. Staff finds the proposal compliant with all applicable standards of Pocatello Municipal Code, assuming compliance with the conditions listed in the staff report.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Yes.
I would move that we approve Agenda Item 8, Okey Dokey Pokey. I just had to say it.
I knew you did.
As specified.
Are you including the compliance with the conditions listed in the staff report?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion by Mangum and a second by Mansfield. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Marshand?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 9, Eagles Landing Division 2 Plat Exploration Deadline Extension Request, Ruth Decker. Council may wish to approve a request by Ruth Decker, represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, RMES, to extend the, the two-year expiration date for recording the final plat Eagles Landing Division 2 pursuant to Potell Municipal Code 16.24070D. Council is also asked to define a time period associated with the extension. Staff has recommended a six-month extension period from the city council decision.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would move for approval of the request by Ruth Decker for the extension of the final plat Eagles Landing Division 2 for a period of six months.
Second. We have a motion by Mansfield and a second by Mangum. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Marshand?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 10, Final Plat Exploration Deadline Extension Request, Terra Vista First Amendment. Council may wish to approve a request by Heidi's Holdings LLC and Boyd Christensen, represented by Creek Hollow and Associates Incorporated, to extend the two-year expiration deadline for recording of the final plat Terra Vista First Amendment pursuant to Potell Municipal Code 16.24070D. Council is also asked to define a time period associated with the extension. Staff has recommended a six-month extension period from, from the city council's decision.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would move for approval of the request by Heidi's Holding LLC to extend the two-year expiration deadline for the recording of the final plat Terra Vista First Amended for a period of six months.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Mansfield and a second by Mangum. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Marshand?
Yes.
Nichols? Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 11, USDA Forest Service Urban and Community Forestry Grant Application. Council may wish to approve a submission of a grant application to the U.S. Department of Agricultural, Agriculture, Forest Service Urban and Community Forestry Grant Program. The Urban and Community Forestry, UCF, grant application would provide necessary funding to improve Potell's urban forests through an urban forest plan, tree inventory, and asset management database, and risk mitigation work. Total project costs are $3,651,915.41, and there is no match required. Council may wish to authorize submission of the grant application, and if awarded, authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to move to approve the submission of a grant application to the U.S. Department of Agriculture Forest Service Urban and Community Forestry Grant Program as outlined in Agenda Item Number 11, and if awarded, authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Nichols.
Mr. Mayor, before we vote, could we discuss this, please?
Absolutely. We have a discussion. Council President.
Sounds like a good program. This is going to require hiring two additional employees for the city, and for that reason, I don't think I can support this. I think our budget has grown to the point that this sounds like a good program, but I don't want to, I don't want to push personnel costs up further.
Fair enough. Councilmember Mangum.
Christine, can we get you for a second? Can you discuss this point that Council President Cheatham brought up about hiring additional staffing? How does that look within this grant application?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Mangum. Christine Howe, Grants Manager for the City of Potell. The grant application does include the hiring of two tree maintenance technicians. Those would be budgeted as full-time staff members over the course of the grant, fully funded from the grant, including both wages and fringe. It's a five-year period of performance, so we anticipate hiring them for all five years.
So the funds for their pay, or yeah, for their pay is all within this grant?
Correct.
Okay, so it wouldn't be coming from city funds, correct?
That's right.
Okay.
I think the concern would be at the end of the five years.
Correct. Which, so at the end of the five years, though, there is a stipulation where we could retain or we could dismiss from employment, correct?
That's correct. There's no requirement in the grant to mean to retain the employees, so you could have provisional employment. We have done that disclaimer with positions specifically out of the Neighborhood and Community Services Division for HUD-funded positions, so that would be a decision the city council could make at the end of the grant term.
Okay, Council President Cheatham.
Are there provisions for salary increases and insurance cost increases included in this grant?
Yes, so the salary was projected out at an average 3% over the five years using current staff rates.
What about health insurance costs? Those have been averaging 10 to 12% a year.
Yes, so that's an applied 45% fringe that we're allowed to use and justify in the grant application. So every, basically hourly wage is multiplied by 0.45%, or 0.45 in order to determine the fringe.
At each, at each year's step level?
For the average, yes. So we use the average to project out. So I did each step for five years, created an Excel spreadsheet, got an average multiplied by 45% to calculate the fringe, instead of making a big long chart for five years.
Okay, so a follow-up question.
Do we have somebody from HR? No. So has there been an issue with this in past? Because you had said that we've done this before, so has it been an issue in the past where we've had somebody for the allotment that the grant allows, and then either they stay or they don't, but has there been any kind of like issue with it? Or has it been a smooth?
In my experience, and I've only been with the city since 2021, the positions that I'm familiar with in our department that are funded through HUD that were contingent on grant funding, we were able to fill those. We currently have a vacancy that we're working on filling, but it hasn't seemed to be, it didn't seem to be an issue when they hired those positions originally. That was a three-year grant period of performance, specifically thinking of the Lead Hazard Control and Healthy Homes Grant. This would be a five-year period of performance.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
This might be, it sounds a little banal, but what is the skill level required for a technician of this nature? Is this, like, do they come with prior experience required, or is this something the city can provide in terms of training?
I'd probably direct that question to the Parks Department, and this was, well, specifically to Brett Hewitt, who's the arborist for the city and park superintendent. He indicated that, you know, these are the positions needed to be able to do this quantity of work.
Sure.
So they do, I believe, have staff that can do the work now. This is just such an increase in the volume because of the available funding that they would hire the new positions, so I can defer to.
What day number?
Parks and Recreation Director, 14-ish.
Going to say 14, I think.
I would like to say I can answer your HR question. When we have hired NCDPG, it's posted as a grant funded and it shows that it may not be renewed. So we have done that in the past for several positions there. But your Parks and Recreation question, we do have an arborist on staff. They would be guiding that process, training them, teaching them, so that they could work on their own.
Okay.
If I might ask a follow-up question, Christine, then. Let's say hypothetically we have difficulty hiring for these positions, as we do for many positions. Is contract labor a possibility through this grant?
Yes, so we could contract out. We do have funding built into the grant to do most of the work through contracted labor. There's just kind of the routine, already identified maintenance and continual pruning and removal that we can do throughout the grant, which would be the primary focus, I believe, of these positions.
Councilmember Mangum.
Ann, can I get you Day 14, Parks and Recreation Director?
Going on 15?
So the amount of labor that we already have going out from the Parks and Recreation Department for trees and maintenance and whatnot, with, if we did, if we didn't bring on other people and we did just approve this, what would that, is there a need for these people? This is kind of what I'm getting at.
There's a desperate need. We wouldn't be able to complete this grant without those extra hands. We don't have the hands right now to accomplish $2.5 million in planting and trimming, and it would take them, and they could probably work year-round in the cemetery during the winter. They would be busy.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
One.
Oh, Councilmember.
This is bigger than the parks, though, right? They take care of the other trees in the city that, I know we trimmed trees on Satterfield and those areas. Would that be something that these people are doing versus street department or, you know what I'm saying? I know that we take care of a bunch of trees that get in the way of our equipment. Is that, is that going to be outside this realm or not?
So we wouldn't be on Satterfield because that's not in our grant application.
But it's outside the parks.
Yes, we would have the ability, I believe we covered that in our conversation, to cover. We could look at private homes if we needed to trim trees. We knew there was a need, we could do that.
Okay.
And we can hire private contractors to do some of that work as well.
Okay. Yep, we've got another one. Brent? Councilmember Nichols?
Thought occurred to me. So let's say somebody had an old half-dead tree in the planters strip. Would this be able to be used to mitigate that?
Assuming it's in the projected map, yes.
Okay.
There are a few areas in town that are not covered.
Right, okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
So we have a motion by Lurick and a second by Nichols. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cheatham?
No.
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Marshand?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Agenda Item 12, FY 23 ADA Ramp Project North Fifth Avenue and Clark Street Resolution Agreement. Council may wish to adopt a resolution and approve a corporate, a cooperative agreement for the FY 23 ADA Ramp Project between Idaho Transportation Department, ITD, and the City of Potell. Authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents subject to legal department review. There is no fiscal requirement, requirement at, or match for the project, but the project will be completed through a reimbursement grant.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve the FY 23 ADA Ramp Project on North Fifth Avenue and Clark Street. The resolution and the agreement, cooperative agreement, as outlined in Agenda Number 12, Item Number 12.
Second.
Thank you. We've got a motion by Lurick and a second by Marshand.
Mr. Mayor, before we vote, may I ask a question?
Sure.
It notes, it's noted that it's a reimbursement grant, and I note in Section 1A in the packet that it says the remaining 25% will be paid upon completion of the project, provided that the work is completed to the state's satisfaction. Have we ever had difficulties getting reimbursement because the state said something wasn't up to par, delay in that reimbursement, any issues in terms of actual funding received?
We have not yet. We've done probably four of these projects identical to this. This will be our sixth one. We're, I went out to bid, went out today, along Fifth Street. And yeah, the 75% upfront, while we're designing, 25% after we're done. I think one of the things to, to implement with staff, or not implement, but to brag them up, we have some pretty good staff that we've got for ADA compliance on ADA ramps that we could. So as they're building them and constructing them, we're going through that checklist that we have to do with the form with ITD and make sure we're meeting all those requirements. So we've been able to do that and not have any, any stumbling blocks or anything on that.
Great.
Any other questions, Council?
Thank you, Merrill. So we have a motion by Lurick and a second by Marshand. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Marshand?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mangum? Mangum?
Yes.
Do I need to re-vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 13, Airport Lease Agreement Resolution of Air Gas Propane. Council may wish to adopt a resolution and approve and authorize the mayor to sign a lease agreement between the city and AmeriGas propane for approximately 0.78 acres of property at the airport for the purpose of bulk propane storage. The lease agreement will be for a one-year term with a one-year renewal option at a rental rate of $4,137.26 per year, to be increased annually according to the CPI. Council President Cheatham.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move for approval of the airport lease agreement and resolution with AmeriGas propane for a one-year term for the lease agreement with a one-year renewal option to be increased annually according to CPI as outlined in Agenda Item 13.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Cheatham, and I'm going to give it to you. You, you earned that one. That was a hard fought battle there for Lurick.
Just give me more.
She'd been trying to, trying to get that in there. I know who won, I know who won, but I got to give it to her.
But it's not on her record.
We have a motion by Council President Cheatham and a second by Lurick. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.